Good evening, I call this board we need to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Michael.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in this hope that we can trust us all. Thank you for joining us this evening, please be advised in the event of a fire emergency or alarm will sound, please know all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, I request everyone please turn your cell phones to silence, thank you for your cooperation. First, we're going to start with additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda.
We do have one addition that you'll find at your seat this evening, it's addition personnel number four. We actually had a teacher submit a resignation today, she was appointed to work back in her home district, and so we wish her well, that's what you'll find this evening as an addition.
Thank you very much, moving on to consent agenda. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent approved consent agenda as listed, may I have a motion please?
So move.
A second.
Can I move?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried, next we're moving on to communications, we will start with points of pride. I will start. Our elementary chess club recently competed regional tournament, their determination and sportsmanship set them apart, the Raiders demonstrated impressive strategic thinking skills and earned recognition and awards for their effort. The helping competition fueled their enthusiasm for the game of chess.
Our elementary PTO recently hosted a fantastic sweetheart dance, bringing together over 400 students and their loved ones for a night to remember, dressed in their finest, families filled the gymnasium and cafeteria with smiles, laughter, and tons of dancing. The beautifully decorated spaces, photo booth, fun music, and sense of community made the event truly magical, this event was a reminder of the strong sense of community we share, and we are incredibly grateful to our PTO for organizing such a special evening. Thank you to everyone including our middle school and high school Raiders who volunteered and made this night so memorable for our students and their families.
The middle, high school hosted a lunch and learn, number six of eight, as we welcome New York State DEC officers and their canine brass, they shared their careers as New York State Department of Environmental Conservation officers with our eighth graders.
Congratulations to our top 10 and their families on all of their academic achievements, what a commitment. Validatorian Hazel Nickerson, salutatorian Lily Clement, Attila Belasey, Juliana Scott, Ava Amorice, Rihanna Lynn, Chloe Kurtz, Grayson Funk, Ryan Murdock, and Jackson Funk.
Congratulations to sophomore James Pattonella who won his 100th varsity wrestling match while competing at the section five state qualifiers at Beverly High School in Bath.
And congratulations to senior Ava Amorice who scored her 1,000th career point.
Thank you everyone. Moving on to board committee reports, there's two board committees that I know of that have been met since our last meeting, one of which I just finished up with is the Genesee Valley School Board Association President's meeting which I just had virtually, of course you can imagine some of the discussion at that table about the impact of federal funding and how that may impact our smaller school districts, NISW, along with our local community reps are very aware of what's going on and what we just posted. The second committee is the negotiations committee, we met last week, last Thursday I believe, and discussed the practice of having board members at the negotiation table, we will continue that moving forward. Negotiations for the CM Kellogg Teachers Association is, when did that start?
We actually start tomorrow evening with our negotiation process, of course we'll have it being done before May 1st.
So that is on the radar, any other committees that I am missing out? Fantastic, thank you. Next, we're going to be moving on to Bob Hearts, he is from Super eval, he is going to give us a brief presentation of Super Eval, which is the new electronic evaluation system that we're likely using to evaluate Dr. Chanel.
Yes, thank you so much.
You know what?
Yeah, President, Dr. Chanel, thank you so much for having me here tonight, and thank you for your business and support, and I'm going to just give you an overview of Super Eval, basically as President Dallow mentioned, when it comes to superintendent evaluations, it's going to be, to make your advice, a hybrid of all these, it's all digitized, it streamlines the process, one click of the button, it automatically creates a proposed final evaluation which you can make edits, and it just drives deeper ritualistic conversations around distribution to explore what we celebrate, where do we need to focus our attention for next school year, so. So with that, I'll just, I'll jump into the platform, how we got our start, we actually, we were, at tech company that spun out of the University of Buffalo, New York City Research University, we were incubated at the Center of Applied Technologies in Education, we were at a conference in 2015, saw a presentation by the General Counsel of NISCUS, the New York State Council for Superintendent, Jacinda, aka GS Convoy, she put together a committee of superintendents to take a look at best practices and evaluations, and developed a rubric, which is very similar to the NISB rubric, that aligns best practices in superintendent, best for highly effective superintendents, and they encouraged a self-reflective evidence-based process, problem was, that process was all paper-based, so superintendents would collect the evidence into reminders, those three reminders became six that you stick, they had to make copies for each of the board members, and board members you'd have to leak through those three reminders, somebody would have to collect the comments and create a proposed final evaluation that the president, and we, the internet tech company, we saw an opportunity to streamline that process and digitize it, and so it makes it easier for superintendents to upload evidence and help inform you as board members, how she's meeting her goals, make it easier for you to partake in the process and offer feedback to the superintendent, and again, just makes the process more efficient. So with that, I'm just going to run you through the platform, when you log into Super Eval, by the way, I'm going to show you the different avenues of support, but once you get into it, if you ever, if you need another onboarding like this, we can arrange, call for President, Dr. Chanel, we can arrange another maybe virtual onboarding session, but this is the main screen of Super Eval, at the top will be your name, this is just a fictitious superintendent in our demo district that deals with other schools, we've got some big data in the 2023-24 school year, so I'll keep it there, if you ever need to go back to a previous year's evaluation, you can use this dropdown, go back to the previous year's evaluation, and instead of having to go to a district clerk's office and pull up a file, it's pinned to the superintendent self-evaluation with Dr. Chanel, which are using with the leadership team, that's where those folks would show up, and we also have the board self-evaluation here as well, so you just click on the board self-evaluation, it goes to the board self eval, you're not having to log out of one platform and into another, but tonight we're focused on the superintendent's self-evaluation. So the first step in the process is really, is foundational to Super Eval, it's, you know, what is going to be evaluated, and what is evaluated is completely up to your leadership team, it could be just on annual goals specific to Kellogg and Montford, it could be on a rubric, it could be on parts of a rubric, it could be on goals in a rubric, whatever is evaluated, whatever you would like to be evaluated, it can be replicated and put into Super Eval. So one A is where those custom goals will go, one B is where the rubric resides, and it allows you to select and deselect competencies out of the rubric so you can make the evaluation more focused, and here at one C you have the ability to adjust weights and ranges for different domains and your kind of inordinate goals. Once step one is complete, this is just a reminder that the superintendent, the board agreed on the goals, now goes over to Dr. Chanel, where she will go into the superintendent's self-evaluation and then uploading evidence, and reflection notes around those areas can be made to help inform these board members how she's meeting her goals, let's face it, you know, the board members, you can't rely on outside of being board members all the time, you might think so, but this allows Dr. Chanel to, again, help inform you how she's meeting those goals, and so underneath here, and this is just an example of a goal around increasing reading proficiencies, underneath that goal, there's a space for Dr. Chanel to really spell out what that action plan is, what are the deliverables, you know, so at the end of the year, there's no ambiguity as to what success looks like, two key critical factors, the allocation team, the standard expectations, and one of the lines of communication, this is where Dr. Chanel can go in and really just, you know, point to, you know, what is that action plan, what are the deliverables again, to remove any ambiguity. So underneath the goal is a rubric, and then underneath the rubric is a place for Dr. Chanel to reflection and comments throughout the year, as well as uploading supporting evidence, you know, PowerPoints for documents, links to references, the reference pages of the website, pictures, videos, whatever the case may be, this is way more evidence than what's needed, usually just one or two examples, but Dr. Chanel has the ability to go ahead and upload those notes and evidence, and then just prior to submitting the evaluation at the end of the year, she will give herself a self-evaluation on how she feels she did that, on that particular goal, and that's also backed up by the reflections, comments, and evidence. Once the self-evaluation has been submitted to the board, and sent to a year-end evaluation, each one of you will get an email notification stating that the evaluation has been submitted, now we are on Peggy Pedders as our fictitious board president in our demo district, you can tell we're on step three, the Chevron's pointing to the right here, this is the board review and evaluation of the superintendent, so this is where each one of you would go in individually, go into the evaluation, and as you scroll down, again, there's our first goal around increasing reading proficiencies, you scroll down, and underneath each goal, section that's being evaluated is the link to the superintendent's reflections and evidence, so the board member, everything is right in front of them, you go ahead, you read the reflections and evidence, or take a look at the reflections and comments, take a look at the evidence, based on that evidence, based on those comments, you simply click on the performance level and how you feel, Dr. Chanel, you live in that area, and then you yourself can offer feedback in the form of text, and or you can also upload supportive evidence, if the goal is around communication with the community, you're at a community event, you take a selfie with Dr. Chanel, you want to upload that in the Super Eval, you can do that in the end of the year. But each one of you would go ahead, write out the rubric, offer feedback, then with one click of the button, board president Dallow, aren't complete, that's just saying, you know, you're moving on to the next step without getting all board members through the evaluation, for whatever reason, the board member falls ill, it does not hold up the process, you can move forward, so with one click of the button, all of those comments have been collated, all of them have been contextualized, and each area being evaluated, all of those ratings have been averaged, and this is where you come together as a board and create a proposed final evaluation, how do you want Dr. Chanel to see the feedback, and what those ratings are, this is where it takes place in step four, this is a neat little data view, as the leadership team, are we in alignment, there's a superintendent's self-evaluation versus the board's average, are we in alignment, you get a green thumbs up when you're exactly in alignment, or is there, you know, a significant disparity between ratings, that's what we're looking for, right, we want to talk about the, you know, hey, with the green thumbs up, where is there a significant disparity between ratings, to make any edits on the evaluation itself, you just click on that, that orange box, go to the edit button, click on edit, and all the edits are made online, so it's not having to do this manually, by scrolling down underneath that first goal, and click on feedback and comments, there, the comment from board member Hartnett that relates specifically to that goal, you don't have to do the evaluation in lab, okay? But this allows you to, you know, make any edits, you can say, okay, Cindy wants her name redacted, great, okay, everybody's saying the same thing, and you want to summarize the comments, you can, you know, here you can summarize, summarize the comments, and you can also change the rating on your rubric, so again, how do you want Dr. Chanel to see the feedback, that is where that takes place in step four, mark that, once you mark that complete, an email now will go back to Dr. Chanel, where, I'm going to refresh my screen here, now we're back on the superintendent view, you can tell we're on step five, the Chevron's pointing to the right, glasses, I need my eyes here, if I click on the proposed board evaluation, now this is where Dr. Chanel can go in, she can see that comparison chart, okay, are there any blind spots, you know, or the leadership team, are we in alignment, Dr. Chanel can see the evaluation and any of the changes that you made, it's an area for post evaluation, reflection, comments, it creates a summary page for the personnel file, as I scroll down here to the bottom, there's a area for general comment by both superintendent and board, and once you've had that discussion at the end of the year, first, Dr. Chanel will sign off, the second electronic release from the board to discuss the evaluation, however, it's not necessarily a agreement with the final evaluation, for the board and sign the evaluation process you've made, would you like to continue and sign off? So first, Dr. Chanel will sign off, then it goes to board president Dallow, board president Dallow will sign off, give a district archetype issue of evaluation, create that summary page, and then it would start in 25, 26, for your work from the, it was in step four, so. That is Super Eval in a nutshell, I know that it's, you know, a quick, lot of information here, but like I said, this is, tonight is just an overview, an opportunity to thank you in person, and to let you know that, you know, when you do need help or assistance, we can do another onboarding session, or underneath the help section here, we log into Super Eval, underneath the contact desk section, we have a 144 number that makes you a live person on our help desk, and then during school hours, this help one becomes a live chat, and live chat is somebody on our help desk, so it's not AI-generated, it's actually giving you a real life, a real life, yes, so. But that is, that's Super Eval, so thank you for having me, I'll see you, any questions while I'm here, any comments or?
Do you believe it's going to be a shift for our board if we have a new paper, but I do think this is the step in the right direction, setting Dr. Chanel to be successful and for us to be successful over. We can use this as well for our board evaluation event, might need another step, depending on how this goes, and our thoughts on that, questions? Thank you very much for talking about it.
Thank you, appreciate it very much.
Yes. Students there, anyone before a bubble call?
No.
Okay, we have no bubble call in this evening, we're going to move on to super and superintendent's report, and go ahead and order to Dr. Chanel.
Alright, so I want to speak on two things this evening, you'll see that I gave you data for January 25, our middle and high school honor roll percentages compared to last year, you'll notice that our overall percent of students that have made both the honor roll and the high honor roll collectively are down this year from last year, I would say from a teacher perspective, what you would hear from teachers if you were asking them is everyone is pushing really hard to put expectations back in place and to make sure that our kids in particularly are writing more, so the challenge is here, and we just continue to tell our kids that we're here to support them, and let's go Raiders, right, let's get back to where we want to be. Next up, I want to talk a little bit about an issue that was brought to our attention last week, I think this is certainly important for, for the public, last week we were made aware that we sent tax bills, so basically, to give a backdrop here, we levy taxes for our school taxes, we actually run a school tax collection period, during that period, our taxpayers are asked to pay their tax bills at the five survey, as you guys know, we had some glitches with five survey this year, right, so we've had to reflect on some of that, not issues of our own doing, but certainly things that impacted our voters, our community, so, we also, when we're done collecting taxes, and it sort of closes out, we send tax bills that folks did not pay onto their local town and county, for those school taxes to actually be re-levered, and so there was a batch of taxes that were not collected, we sent them on to the town of Wheatland for them to be re-leveied into the town and county tax, and it was left off of the town and county tax bill, so, basically what I will tell you right now is I'm not satisfied yet with the plan moving forward, basically what they're sharing with us is, they will re-levy those taxes next year in 2026, which means for the 33 people who did not have their taxes levied this year, they're going to see, they're going to see school tax that looks like it was more of adult. So I do have some phone calls into the New York State Department of Taxation, I'm working with Monroe County Treasurers, trying to understand from their standpoint with their response to me, whether or not that's their own procedure in which they, in the way in which they function as an organization, or if there are some laws that are governing the inability to reprint those tax bills, so, for right now, I have to tell you the jury is out, of course, I have had conversations with our school attorney, and I'm also looking from that lens to make sure that if there is something that we can do, there is a law that would allow us to push to have something reprinted for our taxpayers, I think it's in their best interest, if they don't have compacted tax next year when they open up that 2026 rule.
Do you know if by chance these, 26 did you say?
Yes.
26?
Thirty, 33, I'm sorry, 33 taxpayers.
People from the town of Wheatland, by chance, were they all people that would just come and pay their taxes, or are they people that have a mortgage that you're going to see 890% increase in penalties and all that stuff?
In terms of the 33 names that are on that list, it ranges everywhere from residential properties to a couple of businesses, so, in terms of amount owed, everything from, you know, a few hundred dollars to thousands.
Are you dealing with people that have their mortgage escrow?
I don't, I'm not sure of that, I'm not, I mean, I guess I would have to ask that question of the bank, is that a possibility?
If you ask that, that would be great.
As I say, I ask for a mine, right, so it gets paid on my behalf, so these are, these are 33 school tax bills that did not get paid within the window of time that we requested may be paid, so kind of think of it as collection.
Sounds like you're not an escrow.
Right, we have, we have 33 taxpayers, that, that would be my guess, right?
Very good, it's not quite as bad as about 300, so terrible, thank you though.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you for listening to us, are there any questions?
Are people going out and knocking on their door and saying?
Not yet, I can tell you that I do believe, from what we understand, we got a phone call, Mrs. Who's actually fielded a phone call, which is how we learned that it was an issue, so when Mr. Gargano started making phone calls on our behalf to follow up around what occurred and try to get the facts of the situation, it's when we learned that the county had actually also received at least one other phone call, they hadn't told us, but they had known probably a week prior to us that our submission to the town of Wheatland did not make its way into the tax levy, so right now, what I would say, they're, they don't have any plan for any form of communication, I certainly would not, regardless what the solutions are, and I'm not going to stop until we have good advocacy for our taxpayers, but regardless what that solution is, I would not allow the 33 folks to not be communicated, whether by Monroe County, who did not print those tax levies correctly, or if it ends up having to be us, and that we contact all 33 folks to let them know that this is happening.
These 33 folks should know that someone out there knew about this for five to seven business days before they chose to do anything about it, because that's just, that's just some trouble.
I did send an email this afternoon to Monroe County Department of Taxation, just asking them to, you know, please send me back an official correspondence, where they kind of explained to me in a very official way what occurred, so that I can understand it, and I asked them in that correspondence to please address whether or not my request to have bills reprinted and sent today, why that request can't happen, whether or not that's an internal procedure that they're, that they're not able to do, or if they're leaning on property tax law and are unable to levy now that they have already submitted tax bills, so that's where we're stuck, I think, until I get that communication.
That's cool.
And as I mentioned, our school attorney is also there, you know, in terms of the attorney that we, you're used to Sarah, I'm hearing Sarah's name, Sarah works for a firm with lots of people who specialize in lots of different areas, so here is someone that specializes in property tax, who is going to be reaching out to me tomorrow with some more advice for us as a district on making sure that we advocate it all the way to the end.
Thank you.
I welcome.
Right in the same vein to this, have we resolved the Five Star issue with the lost payments?
Can I ask Jeremy to weigh in on that?
Yeah, so any issue that we knew about with the taxpayer that came up to us, we resolved that issue and that taxpayer was refunded, any penalty and any stop loss that they put on their check, if somebody did not come to us, we did not fix it because we didn't know about it, but anybody that came up to us, I know two people for sure that came back to me, and then the people who, the checks were just returned, I dealt with that without even communicating with the taxpayer, so what happened was the checks were returned to me, we recorded them as paid, and I worked with Five Star to get that through with no penalty, so I would say the majority of people, it didn't even get to them, they didn't even know, it was just, it took an extra month or two for their check to clear the bank, but then two people actually did get hit with a penalty, they came in, we worked with Five Star, and Five Star said, yeah, we'll take care of the penalty to show us proof of payment, they came in and we took care of it.
Thank you.
I'll just add, if there's anyone out there that still feels like their tax bill wasn't handled well by Five Star, they were charged an extra amount of money, they didn't realize they could call the school and we would rectify that, I just want to say that publicly this evening, obviously, we will not stop advocating on that piece either, if those folks still insist out there.
Moving on to old business, there is none, so we're going to start with new business, budget presentation number one, the development of the 2025-2026 annual school budget, Dr. Chanel and Jeremy are going to do this for us, please.
This will be our firsthandest presentation, and can I take this second and also say, unfortunately for us, it will also be mine and Jeremy's last presentation, this is Jeremy's last board meeting with us, I just, I just want to say that while we delve into this last presentation, that Jeremy has been very dedicated to our district for the past four years, I can tell you from my vantage point that we are better because he spent time with us, I certainly, in my learning curve in the very beginning, have said to Jeremy that virtually every part of the school and its function as an organization, I'm pretty comfortable with except for the business office, and so I was really looking forward to sitting beside him and learning, which I've had an opportunity to do, Jeremy is very organized, he is definitely leaving us in a place where the rest of us being able to learn from all his notes and comments that he's leaving behind, and I would say maybe more so in this budget development than typically, as he works really hard to set us up for success, I just want to publicly say thank you to Jeremy.
Thank you.
For all his effort.
Yeah, let's see. There we go, alright, maybe. Alright, so for tonight's agenda, I'll just walk you through a little bit of how this presentation is outlined, we always start with our mission, vision, and beliefs, so who are we, what do we stand for, because every budget that we build should actually be building back to our expectations that we've placed, you'll see our budget calendar, budget guidelines, budget guidelines, and we'll talk about that in detail, but really, that's the board's way of working alongside the administration to make sure that when we're making decisions in rooms that you're not in, that we are doing that still within the confines of agreements that have been made across this leadership team, we'll talk about our decision-making criteria, how we assess things when we have to make decisions to cut, and of course, we're going to dive into some of our proposed budget, which Jeremy will do some teach pieces on for us, and finally, that proposition for a new school of us, so let's start with our mission statement, here at Kellidony-Monford Central School District, in collaboration with our community, we take pride in providing safe, comprehensive, and rigorous educational experiences, in order for all of our students to graduate as ethical, responsible, lifelong learners who are both college and career-ready, and I, I do amend that and say both college and career-ready, because I don't think it should be one or the other, it is definitely our mission. So our beliefs, I will not read this to you all, but basically, whenever we are talking about ourselves as a school, we're, we're laying out for our community really what we believe, so I would say our big key takeaways here is that when we are functioning on behalf of this community, that we care very deeply about the learning environment that we create for kids, it drives the decision-making of this collective group, we want to be collaborative with our community and making sure that we're taking care of our kids and their future, we want our kids to feel respected, cared for, and eager to learn while they're here, we want our communications to be transparent and frequent, we want to provide all of our instructional materials, including our
We want to provide all of our instructional materials, including our equipment, facilities, and the things that our kids are experiencing every day, to be top-notch for them. This budget will take care of those pieces as we're moving through it. Expect, we expect that our faculty and staff will utilize ongoing professional development. It's definitely a goal of mine to build that professional development budget line, which you will continue to see as we map out a budget. Expect high levels of dedication, improvement, and excellence from all of our students and persistence from them while they are working through challenging tasks. We want appropriate caring and healthy behavior from all members of our school community, not just our kids, but all of us collectively. We continually seek to be innovative, to implement and solve problems, and provide the best educational experience as possible for our students. We want our community to feel like we're communicating with them, and in those communications, that we're consistently bringing them back to our mission, our vision, these beliefs, and of course, the values that we hold so dear. We also want to take time to celebrate individuals and group accomplishments with the highest levels of pride. So our budget calendar, tonight is the first night where we're really gonna begin delving in. We will continue that process within, we're hoping by April the eighth that we are adopting a budget, a proposed budget by the board. If the legislative branch of government in the state of New York does not approve their budget and it delays us, we do have April twenty-first set aside. So currently, we do have both of those meetings on our calendar. If we are so lucky to have an adopted budget by April the eighth, the twenty-first meeting is typically canceled on our behalf. May the thirteenth is the public hearing on our proposed budget. And of course, May twentieth, not only will we vote on the school budget, but we will also elect Board of Education members. What is our decision-making criteria? So when we are building a budget, and again, when we are assessing the budget that we have to try to right-size it and make sure that it's healthy, these are our decision-making criteria. The board worked together as a governance team to really set this criteria, to make sure that we are maintaining programs. We put safety first, so you're always gonna see in our decision-making criteria that we are taking care of the safety of not just our students, but our entire school community when we're making our decisions. We want to retain programs that we have and services for our students, especially the ones that need us most. We want to make sure that graduation rates stay as high as possible. That is in fact our overall mission, is to graduate our students ready for the world. We also care very much about the programs that we already have. And if those programs are still supported by data and research, we want to maintain those programs. When data and research is no longer supporting the retention of programs, that we are using that data to adjust the things that we have in place. We want to provide financial means and care for our community's investments. That's our facilities and our infrastructure. You will see some increases in the budget about last year to this year in that particular area to make sure that we are taking care of our facilities. The board did approve the twenty-five-twenty-six capital project, which is also gonna be significant for us and taking care of number four in this upcoming school year. We also want to make sure that our budget is taking care of services that are necessary to operate our district in accordance with the law and to make sure that we are providing and preserving district initiatives. So that's actually one that the board added a couple of years ago. We got ourselves in a place where we had to make some cuts, and we actually decided to cut in an area that we had been busy growing. It was a program we had been building for a couple of years straight, and we decided to, to cut that. So the board asked us to add number six to our decision-making criteria, so that we are taking into consideration if it's been a board goal and it's been part of what we've been building, that it not be first on the chopping block. Our assessment criteria, we are gonna cut if we must in this budget as far away from kids as we possibly can. The achievement of our students and the activities and experiences that they have while they're at school is certainly our number-one priority. Next on that criteria would be any services or programs that we offer that are not mandated by the state of New York. We care about the functions that could be absorbed and handled reasonably by others or by other means. You, I will draw your attention back to reasonable. I think that's something that I've been speaking, at least in, in terms of my role as principal and will carry over as superintendent. What does it really mean when we say reasonably by others? There is that tipping point where we can no longer cut, we can no longer maintain programs and assign responsibilities to others based on that term reasonable. Programs that could be accomplished reasonably by other means. We definitely do a fantastic job as a district at partnering with neighboring schools. As you know, we've increased a lot of participation with Leroy, which has been fantastic. We also use our Bosse's, and we maximize programs that they have to make sure that our kids are getting lots of opportunities. So we are really good at number four. I am gonna hand it over to Jeremy for general support.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right, so general support, this is all your one thousand function codes. So school districts are broken down into a range of budget codes. The first four digits after the letter is the function. So general support is anything from one thousand to nineteen ninety-nine. It includes anything from your Board of Education, your district office, which is your superintendent and business office, all legal, facilities, insurance, everything in, in that means. So right now, you'll see an increase in the budget of six point six-three percent. Primarily, the biggest increase in that is actually a reclassification of expense. We had our shared food service director classified as a two thousand function code last year. We actually expense it in a one thousand, so it's just transferring that expense over to the correct code and budgeting for it appropriately, so we don't have to do that transfer at year-end. In addition, as Dr. Chanel said, we are increasing the budget heavily for equipment. I remember last year, we gave an equipment replacement plan to the board that states if we were at our capacity and what we really want to put in the budget and following that replacement plan, how much would we need in equipment? So we did throw a lot in there. And in addition, insurance increases. Everybody's seeing it in their homes, we're seeing it in the industry. There's two major insurance carriers. The one that we don't deal with is actually going up like thirty to forty percent, we hear. The one that we are dealing with is going up from anywhere from ten to twenty-five percent. We're about that fifteen percent. So we're at the low end, we're working with our insurance provider, and he's assuring us a good interest rate for next year, or interest increase for next year. Transportation, this is anything with a five thousand, and this is anything to get kids to and from school and to and from sports. So you'll see a five point six-eight percent increase there. Again, you're gonna have your salary increases that are contractual. In addition, what we did this year, we had year-end surplus last year that we actually utilized to purchase new bus radios. So our old bus radios, it was very tough to get a signal once those buses were off our campus, which is a safety concern. The new radios we have, I'm not lying, I can be in my house, this bus could be in Buffalo, and you're gonna hear on Claris Day. So it really enhanced our security. There is a reoccurring cost with that, but remember, we do get transportation aid at about seventy-four percent. So really, if an increase in radios, I'm gonna make up a number, is about fifteen thousand dollars, it's very close to that. The net cost is only twenty-five percent of that. And you're gonna see that when we increase the revenue budget as well. Community service, this is our community education program. It's going up one point five-three percent. In here, there's some contractual materials and supplies expense. In addition, the stipend that we pay our community education director, this is just a contractual, it's not contractual, I'm sorry. It's a board-approved rate that's usually happened in the reorg minutes. We have that going up about three percent. And then employee benefits, this is a big one. So last year, I think employee benefits, health insurance in particular, went up about six to seven percent in the aggregate. This year, it went up twelve point four percent. So there's three major plans that Caledonian Mountford has, Healthy Blue, Blue Point, and the High Deductible. Forgive me here, but I, I can't remember which one is which, but the Healthy Blue, the Blue Point, one is going up ten percent, one is going up twelve percent. Those are, those are actual numbers. And then the High Deductible Plan is actually going up fourteen percent. That is normal, because when the High Deductible Plan came out, a lot of people weren't going to that plan. And the people who were going to that plan were quote-unquote "the really healthy people." They weren't going to the doctors, they weren't submitting those claims. So now, as time is progressing and districts are moving people to that High Deductible Plan, and remember, in both of our, in our two biggest negotiating units, it is a plan, the only plan that we offer to our staff, now they're starting to see that expense come in, and the premiums have to increase. So the High Deductible Plan has been increasing at a higher rate than other plans for the last two years. And in the aggregate, they're going up about twelve point four percent. In addition, this is all your FICA expenses, your TRS expenses, which is just a percentage based on salaries. And then our ERS bill is going up about twenty-five to thirty thousand this year, and it's just because of increases in salaries over time. And finally, debt service. You'll see a big increase here, twenty-two percent. Last year, if you remember, I believe we saw a big decrease. The reason for this is because the two thousand twenty-five-twenty-six capital project is now coming onto the books slightly. So we are not going out to permanent financing. We'll get into that permanent versus temporary financing in a later slide. But there's no principal payment next year, but there is going to be that interest payment on the temporary borrowing. So that is why you see an increase right there in debt service. Don't be alarmed, any increase in debt service is gonna be offset by an increase in building aid at roughly eighty-four cents back on the dollar. So now, talking about that ban versus bond. So ban is just a fancy way in the industry, we, we call it bond anticipation, though. It's a one-term temporary financing. So what it means is, think about your home. When you go out and you borrow money out of home and you get a mortgage, that's more like a bond. A ban is anything that you go out for one year or less on, but you can renew it up to five years. We utilize bans when we go out and purchase our buses. And the reason we go out to ban and we don't go out to bond is because that price can change year over year, and we want to be able to be flexible in our budget. So we utilize bans. In addition, you'll also utilize bans when a capital project starts. You'll remember, we had a fifteen point two-three million-dollar project that was approved by the voters in December of twenty-three. We are using two point seven-five of our capital reserve. So the difference is about twelve point four million dollars, twelve point four-eight million. That is what we're anticipating we're gonna spend. However, prices are not gonna come in at exactly that. So if we go out and bond that whole twelve point four million right now, but we only spend twelve point two, we're actually paying interest and principal expense on two hundred thousand dollars that we didn't have to borrow. That's a waste of money to our taxpayers. So what we do is we need, we need the funding to pay the contractors, the architects, and the short term. We utilize those bans. And once we know the project is getting complete, then we go out to permanent financing, which is that bond. We pay off the ban, and then it, it locks us into a fifteen-year payment schedule. You'll see a bond goes anywhere from five, fifteen, to thirty years. Thirty years, five years is on buses, which we don't do, we ban. Fifteen years is on a capital project, and thirty years is on a capital project when you're doing an addition. So when we build a new school, you can actually get that financed over thirty years, so it's less of an impact on your taxpayers. And when you do go out to bond, you have that done-bar schedule. Again, think of it as your amortization schedule for your house. It tells you exactly what your principal and interest payments are from the time you sign up on that bond to the time it matures. This is a snapshot of all the debt that we currently have. So again, you'll see up at the top there, the two thousand twenty-five-twenty-six project. Again, as, as I mentioned, you will not see a principal payment. That's why that number is zero in the twenty-five-twenty-six year. But if you go down to the fourth row there, you'll see an interest payment of that three hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred. That's obviously a guesstimate as of right now, because we don't know exactly what the expenses are gonna be. We don't know any change orders, potential change orders that are gonna happen. But this gives you a good snapshot of what our interest and what our principal expenses are for the next three years. Again, I know you're probably looking at it, Jeremy, it's going up a million dollars from twenty-five-twenty-six to twenty-six-twenty-seven. Yes, but remember, there is no tax impact on the community for any of these projects. So simply, all that's doing is the money's going up, the expense is going up, the revenue's gonna follow in the building aid. When we went out for the twenty-seventeen, the twenty-nineteen, or twenty-twenty project and the twenty-five-twenty-six project, we promised our voters a zero percent increase in the tax levy. What that means is, let's say we have in our budget right now five thousand dollars of the tax levy goes to pay for debt. We promised the community that we wouldn't increase that levy for future projects and go from five thousand to ten thousand. So there's always that local share, but we want to keep that local share consistent, so that we're not burdening the taxpayers. And what we do as a school district is when we have those funds at the end of the year, when revenues exceed expenses, we like to put that money in the capital reserve, so then we can give it back to the taxpayers later. So that's all we did with the federal money, is we put it in the capital reserve, a lot of it, and then we're using that money to offset any tax impact on the next capital project. So please remember that. And again, you'll see that debt service is gonna stay kind of flat once you get through for the next ten years until the next debt falls off the books. But there is zero percent tax impact to the voters.
This is actually proposition number two, which we'll put up to the community. Proposition number one will be, of course, the overall school budget. At our last meeting, you all approved the proposition number two as transportation and purchasing of a new bus. One thing to point out with this new bus is we are paying attention to the laws and how they may or may not change at the state, but we have to prepare for that with needing to keep all of our temperatures controlled. So this particular bus that we'll be buying is a little more expensive than buses that we've bought in the past, and that's because it will come equipped with air conditioning. So overall, taking a look at budget to budget, you'll see here in just the categories that we presented to you this evening what the percent change is, and overall total at about eight point nine-seven percent. So a couple of things to point out to the board. This particular budget that you're looking at, the twenty-five-twenty-six, is really what we would put in if we were building the perfect budget. Right? This, this, just like last year, takes care of the equipment replacement plan. So there's money that's put into a line. As you know, this is only a small percentage of our budget, it's right around fourteen percent, the number that you're looking at here tonight. So there's quite a bit more expense for us to share with you, and then the revenue side. So we did just want to draw your attention to the fact that it's the ideal budget. Does that mean that this, we're gonna get all the things that we wish for? This particular budget, mine also has all of the administrative priorities, and it, the addition of a full-time staff. Now, are we gonna be able to do all those things this year? That's a great question for us as we move forward and kind of balance the difference between our expenditures and our revenue. In this, we also have a capital outlay project, so each year we do capital outlay. This year, we've made the decision to spend time in, here in this building with some of our valves that we have. So we actually have an old system. It's actually original, even in the new high school wing, it's the original system. It's running off of pneumatics, which basically, as Richie would describe it to if he was standing here, it's like lots of air hoses that are running to try to keep our system moving. And as those air hoses age, they get tiny holes in them, which means air is always leaking. So just think about a compressor that you have at home, and if the compressor has a small leak in it, the compressor never shuts off. And so a lot of the heating and cooling issues that we have in this building right now, the ability to kind of keep it sort of normal, we've been unable to do because the pneumatics are, are actually creating some issue for us. So in this capital outlay project, we are gonna replace the pneumatics with electronic valves, which will allow us to be, have a lot more precision in the way that we're handling heating and cooling in the, in the building. What questions do you have for us?
Quickly, I drive my truck with the air conditioning on with the windows down. It's just how I am.
Me too.
These kids on these buses, if the kid's cold, can he roll a window down?
Absolutely.
So it's not gonna be a big deal to buy, spend this money for this bus to keep it sixty-one degrees when the kids might be cold, they're gonna put the windows down.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
And again, we, we do have some summer runs as well, so using this bus primarily for those summer runs, you know, there's always like three or four that you're always gonna have, so utilize those for, for that. And then also, for any special ed run that you have maybe during the, the school year, when you get into that May and June months, just to help you out.
At, at some point, though, all our buses will have air conditioning fifty years from now.
It's an assumption. Because of what the governor's trying to put through with the temperature control on the classrooms, we anticipate it's gonna move to the buses. We only thought it was a fifteen thousand dollar increase in our bus. Again, that's aided at seventy-four percent, and that fifteen thousand extra is paid over that five years and returned at seventy-four percent over those five years. So we think it's a good bang for our buck, because what happens is if you don't put air conditioning in the bus, and then you do it on the back end, it's gonna be way more expensive, probably not gonna work as well. And so you don't want to be caught off guard with those mandates. If you can get out in front of it for a cheaper price, we think that's the way to go.
Great, great idea. I'm not, I'm not questioning any of it, but my final question quickly, please. The radios.
Okay.
We get seventy-four cents on a dollar for those two, right? I'm just curious, you can push a button now and you can hear someone in Buffalo, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
When did all of a sudden you couldn't hear someone in Buffalo? It's like, how old are these radios?
The, the older radios that we had?
The ones that are being replaced, I mean, are radios should always work, radios are...
Yeah, yeah. So the, the bus radios, it would always pick up chatter, like especially with the dispatch radio. So we have three base radios, two at each school, and then one that the transportation director has. Those would be able to pick up buses, but now, any radio that any admin carries that has that bus channel can also pick it up. So think about it like this, when you have a principal who has, and Dr. Chanel can probably talk to this better than I can, but if you have a bus that's off to Bosse's, and they're coming in at lunchtime, but they're running a little late, but you need to keep the lunch line open, you can now communicate to them.
With, with the old radio system, it would take, the Bosse's bus would be about six minutes out before the radio would actually allow them to communicate with us. Our new radios, think of them more like cell phones. They're, they're running off of towers. And so it's a lot, I mean, they could take these all the way down to Swain to ski and still be able to talk back to us on the campus. So yeah, there are two radios that, that we have, two portable ones. Mr. Otto has one and I have one, that allows us to take those radios home with us. So we'll go back to Saturdays ago, we had, we had a snowy day. We have buses out on the road. We also have radios at our houses that allow us to communicate with the driver of that bus to let us know if they're having any issues or need any assistance. It, it actually allowed us last week to support Mr. Otto in a way that we've not been able to support him in the past. He had a family wedding, and Jeremy took the, the radio home so that Jeremy could handle any bus issue with the three or four buses that we had out. any bus issue with the three or four buses that we had out, and allow Ron to actually, you know, have a little bit of a life. So the radios, I think, safety mechanism for our drivers, this is huge. They will have reception with the radios in places you wouldn't get cellphone reception. So, and if they needed to use a cellphone, let's say there's an emergency on a bus, they can't just use their cellphone to call us. They would have to pull over during an emergency and then use a cellphone because the radio was out of range. Now, they can actually just pull the radio down, they can radio right back to all of us that have radios, that there's something happening on the bus, and that they need support.
I wasn't trying to come up with...
Yeah, no, it's just, I'm excited about it, it's the coolest thing. The next thing we might have to design, and I went and sat with the bus drivers maybe two Fridays ago now, and I said, you know, the new bus that we're going to buy is going to have air conditioning. And they looked at me and they said, there's going to be one bus. So maybe it's like the Raider 5 on the go, and if your bus of the month, you get air conditioning. Okay, everybody on board with really good behavior for the hot months.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Awesome. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to new business, number two, approval of election inspector rates. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the election inspector rates for the 2025-2026 budget vote. Head inspector, head election inspector rate of $25 an hour, and election inspector at $19 an hour. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Moving on to number three, approval of MOA. Resolved at the Board of Education, approves the written agreement between the Superintendent of Schools and the Caledonian Muffet Teachers Association and an employee of the district, executed on February 25, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Appointment of the Genesee Area Healthcare Plan Board Member. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, appoint Dr. Rebecca Chanel as the Genesee Area Healthcare Plan Primary Board Member for the 2024-2025 school year. Can I have a motion, please?
Yes.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number five, approval of MOA. Resolved at the Board of Education, approves the written agreement between the Superintendent of Schools and an employee of the district, executed on February 25, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Finally, for new business, number six, approval of consulting agreement. Resolved at the Board of Education, approves the consulting agreement between the Superintendent of Schools and Jeremy Nardone, executed on February 25, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. I just want to make note real quick that we do have some new business in the after-personnel, after-executive session, which is a little change for us. In the backup notes, Dr. Chanel did speak to that, and that is due to us not wanting to move on some person, or some new business before we do the personnel. So it's just a logistical thing. But if anyone that watches us frequently, you know that that doesn't change, but we are going to go to executive session. Resolved at the Board of Education, adjourned to executive session at 6:55 PM to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons and confidential student records protected by FERPA. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. See you soon. Welcome back from executive session.